Trustee Brynig.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitworth, Hallenbeck, here, Fumbier.
Here.
Phelps.
Yep.
McNally.
Here.
All right, if we can stand and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, has this meeting been properly posted?
It was posted in the upper lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, Hometown Bank, Badger Bank, and the Village website.
All righty, we're gonna move into the next section of our agenda, public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to say a few things? Anybody? Okay, seeing nobody that would like to speak on public comment, I'll close that. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second. All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. Any concerns about the consent agenda?
I actually just had a question on an item that was, that we talked about last time, and that was the tree measuring thing. Did that get resolved?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Jane drafted an agreement, Jay signed it.
So what dates is he going to be doing the tree measuring?
He started a week ago, and it's through toward the end of February is the date that's on the agreement.
Okay, so for the next three months, he might be out and about measuring.
Yes.
This is a good time to do it, so.
Okay, thank you.
I saw him doing it. It was just a stick, and then he had to measure, you know, 10 feet up or 8 foot or 6 feet up.
Yeah.
So he was out doing it last week almost right away. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any other questions, concerns?
I will correct and add Jay's last name to the paragraph under reports D. It was Director Lord's comment. I just wrote Jay, so I'll add his last name, and then I'll take out the extra dollar sign that I have in my bills.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Carries. Reports, President's Report. I've got the three things here. We had our downtown Cambridge Christmas, and I think it was on the evening of December 4th. We had the cookie walk, and there was caroling, and there was the elf shelf, which there was a whole bunch of stuff in here. Who was putting that on? I can't remember.
The Sayers have done it for years, 30 years, and then Friday night they have the magician in, they have arts and crafts, and it's.
This room was filled with stuff that you could buy. There was a visit from Santa Claus, there was tree lighting. It was just a wonderful evening. I had asked our law enforcement to post a squad across from Veterans Park right next to the gym, and they did so. And I think that helped because it's dark, and sometimes people don't always see the intersections. I do want to thank the Lions Club because they did the tree lighting. There were carolers there, but I don't remember the organization that they were with.
CD players.
Oh, was it CD? Okay, all right. I talked to them, they were very nice. But we had a great, great event. It was just, it showcased Cambridge again. Second thing I want to talk about here, I was out seeing some people. Chrissy, your name had come up from somebody that I respect, and was talking about the exemplary staff that we have, and really had some nice things to say about you. So I appreciate that.
Would they do now?
If I get a compliment, I will always share that. And then I know Todd, you're gonna be coming in here, but I wanted to thank Derek. When we had our snowfall, I had asked if I could just have a ride with one of you guys, and he had the truck, and we were, we spent most of that run, it seemed like, in the vineyards, not on the sidewalks, but on the cul-de-sac. And there's a tricky one in there. And I was watching him to see how he was doing with, you know, scalping, and there was one part where just a little bit of dirt, you know, showed up. Otherwise, you know, get to the curb and lift the blade, push the snow in, did a wonderful job. You guys got out there, and, you know, I saw you later that night doing sidewalks. So thank you very much. We'll get more from you on that. But those are the three things that I wanted to say for my President's Report. Okay, Economic Development Committee. Paula.
We met last night. We talked about a bunch of stuff. I think probably the biggest thing that we talked about is the Economic Development Committee is putting together a list of initiatives that the committee would like to do, and then we're going to be picking like the top two or three items to concentrate on for 2023, things that are actually doable. One of the things that had interest was business visitation program, so that we can get to know who all of our businesses are in town and find if there are ways that the Economic Development Committee or the village could help the businesses in town with anything they might have going on. Another one that had some interest was maybe doing a partnership, trying to broker a partnership between downtown buildings and the elementary school to see if we could get art posted from the students in particularly some of the empty storefronts windows that we have to see if we could do that. That was something that, again, no cost, but that might be nice. And then we talked about, one of the other things that surprised me was that the Economic Development Committee, we may be coming up with some capital improvement items that the village of Cambridge could do, and suggesting those that perhaps the village, you know, things that might help us from an economic development perspective, that then the village in the future could take a look at those and try to plan for saving towards some of those capital improvement items. So those were three, just a whole bunch that came up that were examples. Kayla Sipple was nominated and accepted and elected to the chairperson, so Kayla will be the chairperson of that committee going forward, which I think is an excellent decision because Kayla really has done a lot to really jumpstart this committee and getting us doing things. Kevin, Christiane, and Chris also had lots of really good contributions last night, so we had a really good meeting.
Is there anything new going on? I mean, we've talked about maybe signs. Is there anything?
Oh, the village signs, the signs for the village. The signs are done, but we think it's, there's two issues right now. One has to do with getting the easements for placing the signs. We're still working through those. Jane, I think, has the easement document ready for the country club for placing it on the east side of town. The one on the west side of town, I think our goal is going to be to put that in where Quick Trip is going to go, hopefully, maybe if we can work that out, but that's probably a year down the road yet. So we are looking at what was really nice, Hometown Bank, Kevin from Hometown Bank has offered up a position, a place where we can store the signs in a climate-controlled area that they don't use at all. So we're gonna contact the signage people, get the signs here, we're gonna store them at the bank, and then hopefully they'll come out in the spring and install at least one. We may need to have the village install the second one for the Quick Trip, or if, or we may have to, you know, hire someone else to do it as well for the second one. So 2023, we will have at least one welcome sign in Cambridge. All right, thank you, Mark.
Questions for Paula? Okay, Chris, Joint Law Enforcement.
We elected a new chairperson with Arnie Evenson as our new chairperson. Chad had a report basically that tis the season for depression, so that seems to be trending upward. We're still down one person, and that's all I have. Tim, you got anything?
No, that's basically it. Just the depression thing. He wanted us to make sure that we're all doing well mentally during the holiday season because it is seasonal affective disorder.
Yep.
Time of year.
All right. Okay, thank you. Todd, Director of Public Works, you wanna come up and introduce yourself, give us an update, please?
Todd, Director of Public Works. Happy holidays to all. I'm gonna start out with the incident that we had with Jay. Okay, he was washing a truck, and it, some rust kicked off that truck and got him in the eye, and he wasn't wearing protection. Well, that rule has changed, and they are wearing protection. But we are in an eye wash station for that occasion, but it was more like a black eye is what he got, you know, because it popped, it popped him right on the side of the head here, so.
Wow, that's crazy.
But that's rust.
Do you have safety glasses?
Well, that's the thing. Now there is. There's a rule on it now, because there's no ifs, ands, or buts. We've cleaned out the, off that beaten path. We've cleaned out the drain areas by No Name Park out there, and we made sure that there's good flowage through there. We just did that today. Before the snow, we went and cleaned all the street drains to make sure that the water, because we knew, we knew it was gonna be a wet, heavy one, so we went ahead and cleaned those out before the snow.
Is No Name Park the one off of Madison?
Yes.
Is that the only one you're talking about?
West Madison and Johnson.
Yep.
And that's, that's, that's a pretty interesting place right there. Kind of a dangerous place for kids, I think, but that's just a personal opinion. But anyway, Cody, Cody is now trained. He plows. How's your street over there? He plowed your street.
It's good.
And he plowed the back of yours.
Oh, he did? Good. Ours is good?
I had to leave him on his own. We had a breakdown.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I had him for about two hours, and he caught right on. But it was, it was, this is, you know, that snow was actually a really hard one to train people on because it's so heavy. You gotta find your, you gotta find your niche on how to move that snow.
And ours is tough because we have the, we don't have a curb, you know, we have got the drive-over curb, so usually our lawn gets dug up.
Right.
Didn't have that this time, so.
Yeah, and he didn't, he isn't using the link right now.
Okay, good.
I'm gonna wait till you, I'm gonna wait to get him out to the vineyards using the link because they don't have parked cars out there.
Nice.
It's a good, well, it's a good place to practice, you know. It's a good place to practice out in the wide open and not, not in a tight area because people like to park for some reason on these older streets, and it gets kind of tight. So I'm sending, I'm sending him out in the wide open, that's what I'm doing, until he's, until he's got it, but he's pretty much figured it out. We even got an interesting, we were going down Sullivan, and three deer come running out on us right into the village. So deer are all over the place to watch. That's where you're driving, apparently, but.
How's your equipment for that snowfall that we had, I mean, besides rust coming off?
It's back in order.
Okay.
We got it back in order. It took a couple days, but we got it back in order.
All right.
We blew a hydraulic lines on the truck that you were in, and we got it back to the shop, and I was able to repair that that day, just limping to make sure that we could get all the plowing done before I went out and did sidewalks.
Okay.
Shelby says you're a good trainer.
I'm a good trainer.
Yes, you train well.
Okay. Anything else?
I think that's about it. Anything you need? I'll tell you though, those guys are doing an awesome job.
Okay. I'm not aware of any.
It's definitely worth the hire of those two guys.
Good.
Wow.
I'm glad, it's good to see the Public Works Department, you know, full and working well together.
We are, we're working really well together.
Very happy to hear that.
Everybody's, everybody's tucking in and helping, you know.
That's the way it should be, so that's good.
Especially when things break down.
Yeah.
Okay. No, the snow was proud and wasn't aware of any concerns, any complaints from anybody, so keep it up.
And thank you for being aware of the safety issue and making those changes with the eye wash stations, as well as the safety glasses and the link, so.
Oh yeah, that was, as soon as that happened, that was.
Do we need to put one of those little X amount of days with no accidents? Do we need stock checking?
I think we'll do pretty good now with the safety glasses. You know, the thing is, is that he's always wearing his glasses for some reason, maybe, you know, how many times would he wash a car, do you wear glasses to protect your eyes?
I wouldn't think to do it.
You don't even think about that. So now he's thinking about that. Because I walked in there when he was washing the truck the next night, and he was wearing glasses.
That's good, all right.
Doesn't that stop them?
That is, it's craziness.
Okay. All right, thank you, Todd, and Merry Christmas to you.
Happy holidays.
Okay. All righty, Village Office Updates, Lisa.
Lots of stuff going on. I did recently have a discussion with Dane County on the Water Street Bridge project. The guidelines have changed a little bit with the federal grants, where we could now potentially be covered for 100% of the project.
Fantastic.
So they're looking at all the requirements to make sure we qualify. If it does look like we'd qualify, they will resubmit and pull the application that was already approved. They said it would cause about a year delay in the project. The bridge is still safe, sound for a good 10 years. There's no safety concerns, that it has to be done right now, so they'll let us know as they get closer to the deadline when they'd have to apply. If it looks like, yes, we'd qualify, they'll resubmit and hopefully get 100% covered. Tracy, fill back with Kashkhanan Solar stopped in the office. The project right now is in the planning and development stages. Basic work will begin next spring, summer, fall, and into 2024 is when most of the construction would take place. They said they would like to come in and give us updates as they do start construction, meet with the board. If there's any questions, feel free to reach out to them. In January, Joe DeYoung with MSA will be coming in to give an update on the Lagoon Drive intersection. He has received information back from the DOT, so present that to the board and get direction from the board on where to go with that. January meetings, we'll also be looking at a reduction in the letter of credit for Scott Farms. They're currently working on the final as-built with all the grading in the streets, and they're working with MSA on that, so MSA will give us direction on the reduced letter of credit. They did do a walkthrough last week, created a punch list. There's very minor things that they're finishing up on with that. The county has met with Quick Trip, Todd Schultz, the engineers regarding the stormwater management out at the new site. They're making progress on that. November election has all been entered into the system, working on final reconciliation, follow-up letters that we need to send out for the state. Final verification of postcards that were sent out after the spring election by the state. We have to go in and verify that information. New candidate packets are available for the spring election. Anybody public wants, they are in the office. We are asking to have candidacy and non-candidacy forms back to us by November 20, or December 21st or so. The deadline's 5 o'clock on the 23rd, but with the holiday, better to get them in sooner rather than later. Sorry to say Ted just did give me his non-candidacy.
I did.
So there will be one vacant seat to fill on the board. Mainly Chrissy has been very busy working, preparing the taxes, working with the county and the Department of Revenue, the statement of taxes, levy limit worksheet, tiding permit, mill rate worksheet, preparing inserts for the tax bills. Tax bills were picked up today, so they'll be going out this week. We will be creating a script. I'm sure we won't be getting calls on the bills. Our assessments went up due to the reassessments, but our mill rate did go down. The village did have the smallest percentage increase of all of the taxing jurisdictions, which was good. Beginning a lot of the year-end stuff, insurance renewals, verification, state and federal reporting, new federal healthcare reporting, payroll stuff, Tree City, working on the bike trail grant, the safety grants, the LRIP grant, retirement and with the assessor, getting them the information they need. Bids for well number three were open last week. They will be presented to the Water and Sewer Committee next week and then brought to the full board in January. Comprehensive plans on this agenda, but that will begin in earnest in January as well. Johnson Street, there's still that little bit to fix in the intersection, so MSA is working with them. That may not be done until spring now, but that's still up there.
Is that gonna cause an issue with plowing? Okay.
We always drop salt in the intersections.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not a big deal, it's not a big problem. We'll keep our eye on it, so.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a huge duck pond, but it's generally in the rain. You can, you can see that it's there.
Sure.
But with salt and stuff like that, it seems to, it seems to be not a problem.
Okay, all right, great.
It's not a huge pond, but it's enough to say that you didn't do your job or anything.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Also, Chrissy's been doing some research on being able to accept credit card payments in the office. We, right now, we accept them online, but we don't have the capability in the office, so looking into that. We do get a fair share of people requesting and asking for that, so.
That's probably gonna require a decision here though, because you're gonna have that merchant fee.
Merchant fee can be charged back to the company.
Put back to the customer.
To the customer, yeah.
They give us all the marketing, they give us the machine, they give us everything, support.
And it's added in, it's automatically added in, charged back to the customer, not the merchant. Anyway, between 2 and 3.5%.
Right.
Which we currently have online.
The online one does it too, right?
It would be the same.
But it would both be the same company.
Yep, so.
Anything else, Lisa? Let me, if I can just follow up on one item that we talked about, and then I'll get to you, Paula. You mentioned Todd Schultz. I called him this week just to see how he was doing, and he is, they're okay. He's very frustrated because he's dealing with Army Corps of Engineers, Department of Transportation, let's see, DNR and Dane County. And everything is, it's just taken so much longer. He promised me he's not ever gonna do another project, you know, that if it's not already in effect, he's done with Dane County. So he is moving ahead, but they will not be, doesn't anticipate putting anything up, this is the Quick Trip, until the end of the first, now the beginning of spring, latter part of spring, somewhere in there, that they might start mixing up the dirt, but it's been very frustrating for him.
Has he done anything with Melster property?
No, because of all the work that's being done here on the Donna Merg property, he hasn't been able to do anything.
The upper extension went through March, so.
Yeah. I talked to him about it just briefly, and I said that might be something that, you know, we may have to talk about here as a board, you know, to extend, but we can do that at a later time. Yeah, I just wanted to mention because you had talked about it. Paula?
So with the holidays coming up, what are the, what are going to be the village, because the holidays land on a, on a weekend, so our holiday day off for staffs would be this Friday and the Monday.
Yes.
So how are we going to handle the office?
We will be talking about it at our staff meeting. What we do is usually flex our time, especially with tax payments.
If I requested the 22nd off, Vicki can have the 23rd and the 26th off, I'll be here to collect taxes.
Okay, great. So I just want to make sure people know that the office, we will be open that Saturday, or the Friday and the Monday, so if people do want to bring in for their tax payments, we'll have people in the office for that.
New Year's Day is the same.
And New Year's Day would be the same, okay.
So we'll flex and.
All right, super, thank you. Thank you for that. And then, and then, all right, so that's good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Lisa?
Yes. I'm not exactly sure where this Quick Trip is going, but I keep hearing about it's gonna be a new one built. Where exactly is this going?
Across from the winery.
Where 134 comes out now.
Yeah.
It will be an intersection there and go straight across, and it will be on the terrible directions.
Southwest.
The southwest side there.
Across from the.
South and west, I think.
Across from the winery.
It's across from the winery.
Just south of there. It's gonna be in the Vineyard Division?
No.
No.
Across the, across the street.
So 134 will go across there, and it'll be.
Across Highway 12.
I thought it was going into that field next to it. Okay.
It's going into the, take, take the Quick Trip right now and just move it more towards Madison.
Yeah, to the west.
And that's where they're gonna stop.
134, 12, 18, you go in.
That'll last about five years.
And it'll be right there.
Okay, so I'm.
Been the stinkin' people.
Yeah, 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 it's out there. They're kind of frustrated because they thought it would be.
And then the other thing I heard is that Town of Christiana was filing suit against Kashkhanan Solar.
Yes.
To stop their thing, but you're, you're telling me that they're gonna keep proceeding.
They're proceeding what they're planning.
Whether they're in court or not. Okay.
Say that again?
Yeah.
So Kashkhanan Solar is being sued by Town of Christiana.
Good.
And other.
And, and other municipalities, but.
Individuals.
According to what I'm hearing Lisa say, is they're still gonna keep going forward regardless of whatever lawsuit they have going out in court.
I don't have the stuff, like I talked about it last time, I believe that they were supposed to start construction in like October of this year.
Right.
For the, for this, but now that could be held up, there could be an injunction.
Part of it's solar panels, they can't get any.
Yeah, there is.
Too bad.
Right. It's too bad.
Okay. All righty, is there anything else for Lisa? All right, Lisa, thank you very much. Lots of stuff going on, and that's, that's good, get the property tax bills out, and with some of those numbers, we will see how this, it's gotta be dealt with responsibly. So thanks for all the help on that one, too, Chrissy. Okay, bills. Chrissy, you wanna give us a summary?
Sure. First round, $24,996.61, and the second round that was done today, $20,047.47, for a grand total of $45,044.81.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills and set them out.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
We didn't get the attachment for the second round of bills in the email. At least I didn't see it in my email.
You know what? I'll give it, I had the same thing, so.
Sorry, maybe he asked for a copy.
I asked for it, here.
Can I just look real quick?
Yeah. While Paula is looking at that, I had two questions, and I got, I think I answered one of them. There was a $92 charge for this Jay Ames for the eye treatment after the accident.
There was the clinic.
And that's the rust that came and hit him, and that he had to go in, and that was And that's the, the rust that came and hit him, and that he had to go in, and that was deductible? Okay.
Well, that was just their bill.
Their bill.
We submitted it to Insurance for Workers' Comp, so the insurance.
All right. I, I just didn't know what it was about, and then.
Sorry. If it's submitted to the Work Comp, why are we paying it out until they decide whether?
Because we don't wanna have a negative thing out for us. Then I submitted the bill to Workers' Comp. Workers' Comp most likely, or the insurance company's gonna be sending us a check to reimburse us.
They'll reimburse us.
And they're keeping the claim open in case something does still happen, or if Jay's, like, has to miss work or something like that.
Okay.
Are you okay? Your question's answered on that?
Yeah.
That's what we did as well with the flag.
It's all good.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have two questions.
All right. Well, go ahead. Go ahead.
I saw something in there, and it spurred to me the, the election, the electronic books for voting. Did we get those ordered?
I'm working with the company right now. They're not ordered yet, but I'm working. We had to do some paperwork, fill out with them.
Because I noticed stuff in there on election. I'm like, I wonder if one of these is those who passed, not yet. Okay, those are coming.
We're working with them.
All right. And then the light pole on Lawn and Main that had to be repaired. Do we, no, no, how did it get broken?
I had to file with Dane County. Chad couldn't give me the police report, so I had to go through Dane County and file to get the report. So I haven't received it yet.
Okay.
So once I do, then I'll find out who the insured is, and then I'll go after the insurance.
And go after the insurance there. Perfect. That was exactly my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for knowing what I was thinking.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, I have one here. Safe Communities, the municipal donation, medical drop program, it's $1,500.
One is a thousand for the med drop. Is that how it is?
Med drop program?
Med, it shows two of them.
Okay.
One, a thousand's for the med drop, and the 500 is for the Safe Communities donation. It's in the budget.
To be part of the program.
Okay. And this, this is all approved through the audit and finance?
Yeah. It's an ongoing, she will be coming in February, I believe, to give an update as well.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll learn more about it then. Okay. Any other remaining questions on bills? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Franklin?
Yes.
Wait, hold on, Beck.
Yes.
Klumbeer?
Yes.
Phelps?
Yes.
Ryan Egg?
Yes.
Nally?
Yes. All right, thank you. New business, discussion and possible action regarding the Cambridge Foundation request.
I haven't heard back from anybody else. The three items we have talked about is the electric and Veterans Park, which Todd is getting some quotes for that. LBK Park for playground equipment. We did just receive the check for $12,500 from the Vineyards toward that. We do have a small grant for that. I know the Vineyards HOA talked about possibly doing some fundraising for that, but we had talked about including that in our request. And the third item was the Kashkana Creek cleanup, which Todd is waiting to get some information from the Jefferson County Sewage District on the costs of that to include.
That's good.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Is there a dollar amount? We're looking for the Vineyards Park?
The quotes that we had are a little outdated. The simplest we had was like $30,000, but.
Like a basic package that we can build up on?
Do we need to go that much? Can we do something smaller that can be added on to? You know, there's different options, but the.
So what are we gonna ask the foundation for?
And that's.
Do we ask them for, for as, as much as they can give up to $30,000?
Well, we do have the $12,500 from.
Okay.
We ask for 15 or something like that?
The Vineyards.
Sometimes it helps when we can say we can, if they can match what we have.
If we can say, yeah, we have the $12,500 plus.
Plus, what is it? One, a thousand?
A thousand or 1,500.
From the grant? Yeah, so if they can match what we've.
So we're like 14. Then we'd be close.
Yeah. Ask if they could match the 14, and then we can fundraise for the rest. That'd be fantastic.
That's doable, for sure.
Yeah, that is doable.
I would highly suggest it. Ask QuickTrip.
Oh, yeah, we could ask QuickTrip for some. We could ask the, we could ask the solar firm for them to sum too. I mean, at some point.
QuickTrip is a great way to start, but the Lions Club is also very community oriented. There would be a nice way to maybe get a thousand dollars out of them, too.
The Lions Club does an awful lot, I mean, particularly out at the ponds, so if we can, if we can dip into some other buckets, I think that might be nice as well.
Never heard of the check.
Yep, absolutely.
I noticed that the bank has their name on, on the park up there.
That, that's the old bank, though, before it was bought out. Yeah.
But then it would be nice to put a sign up, you know, donate it by QuickTrip and to the foundation or.
We could do that.
The only thing right now is that there's a due date with the foundation. Everything has to be done by December 31st.
Yeah.
Whereas these others, if it doesn't get approved by the foundation, then maybe we go to the next.
So if the foundation could match up to there, then we can go out and we can get a bid, and we can figure out what we have to, what we have to raise after that, and we can, we can go about in doing that. I think that's a great idea.
Todd, I'll just continue to work with you on lights and Kashkana Creek.
Supplier, or the company in town here that supplies all that park, park stuff.
Yeah, that's who we work with.
Yeah, absolutely.
We recreation.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else on this one? I don't think there's anything to do right now. It's just.
Well, a letter needs to be written up, right, with what we're asking for?
The application. Yeah, so.
So she needs some direction on what needs to go in that letter?
Yeah. If we're, you know, once we get the quote for the electric, if we ask for a match of, say, $14,000 for the park, and once we get the number for the Kashkana.
Okay.
I think if we ask for those three things and, and get any one of them, I think we'd be doing good.
Yeah. They were very generous last year.
Yeah.
I think you will. But, all right. Does anybody wanna make a motion to authorize Lisa to proceed?
I'll make said motion.
All right. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Lisa, work your magic and contact the Cambridge Foundation. All righty. B, under new business, discussion and possible action regarding the Village Board meeting of December 27, 2022. Think we're gonna have one.
Thought it was canceled.
Well, we have to make a motion to cancel it.
I thought we did that last month. Heard two weeks ago. I'll make a motion that we cancel the 27th and resume in January.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
December.
Yep. And resume in January. Yep.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're gonna meet again in, starting in January. Okay. This kind of follows into it. Discussion of possible action regarding the authorization for the clerk administrator and the treasurer to sign and approve payable checks after December 13, 2022.
Till the year end, though, right? Only?
Yeah. Anything that needs to be done in a timely manner. If it can wait, they'll wait until we meet in January.
I'll make that motion to authorize the clerk administrator treasurer to pay bills till the end of the year that need to be paid.
Second.
All right.
So these would be just the standard bills, not anything extra, no extra bonuses, no extra payment for, because we got grants or anything like that. This would just be the standard regular bills.
The standard accounts payables that come in.
Anything that needs to be put in for 2022.
Yeah.
But if it's something extraordinary for 2022, something that we weren't expecting, would, would, could you hold it, and then we just hold it in arrears and do an approval in January?
We don't have an amount on this, so it's just authorization, so.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're gonna trust that Lisa and Chrissy take care of our bills through the end of the year. Item D, discussion of possible action regarding the 2023 comprehensive plan update. There's three parts to this. Public inclusion plan, resolution 2022-17, and the MSA contract. You wanna take them all at once, Lisa?
Yeah, we'll kinda take them all at once. The board, a couple months back, did approve, working with MSA on the comprehensive plan, so I have been working with them. They did put this together for us, the, the three things, you know, by state statute, there has to be the, the public inclusion plan. Their goal, we will have at least one public hearing. They'll be meeting through statutory requirements. It's the Plan Commission that does the comprehensive plan. In January, we would start with project kickoff, just talking about issues, opportunities. They have met. They have our old one. They have met with Mark Roffers, who helped us out with the solar, to gather the information that he had put together for the PSC. As we move forward, there will be opportunities, as we're discussing specifics. They will invite the Economic Development Committee into a Plan Commission meeting. It will be a joint meeting between the two to get input from them. So they have their public inclusion, the resolution. And that just talks about the public inclusion. We will proceed. And then the contract, so we did approve, working with them. This is the, the contract that will then allow them to begin work in January.
I got, I got a couple of questions. So for the public inclusion plan, you have the open house at the, at the end of the planning process? It kind of seems, it's a little counterintuitive to me. You think you would have them at the beginning, so they're involved. I don't want us to, like, get scope locked on a plan and then present it to them, and then it's too late to change it.
No, there'll be opportunity to change it. I think, you know, they'll be looking at the plan we have and moving forward, updating things, changing things, getting the input from economic development and so forth.
Okay.
Rather, you know, it's more directed input early on, the comments after, and it can be tweaked then as we move forward.
And then we talked about doing the survey, and I see that's one of the options or other methods. So I would, I wanna include that. I think we should include it. Paula, didn't Economic Development want to include that?
Yes, but Kayla has some ideas on whether we have MSA do it for the $2,900, or if that's something that perhaps we could just do ourselves.
Okay.
Because there's a really good sample of a public survey that Lake Mills did that was really, really good.
Okay.
So.
So I, I think we should do that maybe on the front end.
I agree.
It guides us. So we're actually taking the public input and using it, instead of doing it later on, where it's like, oh, we already put in three months of planning. So I don't know if we wanna keep moving on the survey?
It can be discussed at the initial Plan Commission meeting.
Okay.
We can bring up if it can be done independently. We would need the board to approve some funds if we do it independently, too, because nothing is budgeted for that. So it would be either way, coming back to the board then for approval, but.
I don't think the 29. I thought, I thought when we talked about, how much did we originally approve? Just the $24,000?
We did not approve the money we approved moving forward with MSA.
So do we need a number out there?
So we.
We discussed it during budgets.
So, so can, can I make a motion to approve the, do you want me to include the survey?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll just do it through MSA?
Okay. On the front end.
Yeah, well, that's, and that's what we talked about in the initial planning kickoff meeting with them.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the MSA contract for the lump sum of $24,000 with the addition of the community survey for an additional $2,900.
I'll second.
Hey, now we can further discuss, if anybody has any other concerns. So what I, my concern, or what mine was, is I wasn't clear on the, how we pay them these dollars, because in the master services agreement, it says they bill us monthly.
So as they do the work, different steps they'd be in?
Okay, so, so, but, but we wouldn't give them their final payment until we get the final.
Product.
And, and approve that final product. So, so we can hold back that final payment until we get, we can get that final approval, until we're good with what they produced.
Yeah.
Okay. And I don't, I didn't know that there was really, I didn't necessarily see that, that there was anything in here from a payment perspective regarding that, so that would be my only concern, that, that.
And I'll clarify.
Do you want to clarify for that? Okay. That would be great.
Yeah.
Can we, on that one, Paula, I know it's your motion, but can we have it where at least 20% of the contract? So if it's $24,000, it's $4,800, $5,000. Otherwise, if they're sending you bills all the way along, and there's gonna be one last bill for a thousand dollars, you know.
Yeah.
We don't want that to, to be the only, you know, skin. If we, we want it to where there's $5,000 left, it's kind of a retention on a contract.
Yeah. I mean, that would be.
20% is kind of a high mark.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we get it.
Well, I mean, if you think, although, because they're calling out five meetings, and the last of the five meetings is the Plan and Commission adoption, which is the public hearing for public comment and adoption. What if after the public comment, there were changes we wanted? So to me, so if there's five significant items, right, then, then paying them in five installments would make sense to me, because we'd be paying them for kind of each one of those meetings. So that five, or that 20% that Mark is talking about is, I don't think is necessarily out of line if we think of it in five, paying it five installments.
And it will come to the Village Board for final approval after a recommendation from Plan.
All right. So you know what you have. I don't know if you wanna amend your motion.
I guess I'd, do I need to, do I want, because I still agree with this. I just, do we need to make a change, ask for change in the master services agreement to correspond with the, with a payment plan? Right, right.
I'll follow up with them and see if, yeah, they can change that.
See if we can change the payment plan. It'd be five, five installments at the completion of each one of the five meetings that they, 20% at the completion of each one of the, the meetings that they outline.
Uh, any other?
I got one more thing. So like the, the sole thing's gonna be promulgated on the, on the village website, and that's, that's a problem, because their website is, it's hard to find. I mean, most people can't even find it, you know.
Our website is horrible.
Google's not recognizing it.
Yep.
Okay. Really?
And, yep.
So what I'm saying is, yeah, we could get that Google search, the post, the website, that'd be awesome. Another thing, do we, we wanna look into having a project website, so people can get to this thing with ease and don't get frustrated? I'm not gonna do the, it's too hard to get to.
Well.
I guess the Google search will help.
And MS, and MSA may have a different methodology for gathering those surveys that doesn't go through our website.
Yeah.
It would most likely go through like a Survey Monkey or something like that.
Okay. Okay. That'd be good. Okay.
So, yeah, and, and, and for getting to our website, I think we just need to post to people what our website is. Part of the reason Google doesn't know where we are is because nobody ever goes to this, hits the site, so. I'm going to try and post on Facebook, "Hey, everybody, click on this site so that we can find our village government site."
And I guess it's something we can get to at the Planning Commission, but yeah. But, yeah, if we post it on the Cambridge Facebook page, that'll help. A lot of people are on that, so.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I got.
So, we've got a motion and a second. We kind of started with some other discussion. Can you read it before we have a roll call?
Twenty-four thousand with the addition of the survey for twenty-nine hundred. I will clarify with them, five installments after each of the five meetings if possible.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Whitmer, Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Kumbir?
Yes.
Phelps?
Yep.
Bryan Egg?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Did I take care of everything on that particular item?
No, we need a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 202217, a resolution to establish public participation procedures for a comprehensive plan update.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Do we need to add the survey to that?
No.
No, this is just the public participation procedure. So, I don't think it has to specify.
This is just.
It's just saying that we will include the public.
Yeah, this is just to, like, to make notice that we're going to be complying with the Wisconsin statutes, right? Sixty-six dot one, zero, zero, one, parentheses, four, and four A.
The statutes require the public hearing and so forth. They don't require the survey.
Okay. I got you.
So.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And then, lastly, the MSA contract? We're good?
We did that.
I did. We did that one first, sorry. We did those out of order marks, sorry.
Okay. It's fine. It's fine. I'm looking at these things three different ways. All right. Okay. Moving on. Unfinished business, Fire Commission update. There was supposed to be, I was trying to have a meeting and it didn't happen with the Fire Department to be able to talk about what their concerns are. All I have been told is by Mr. Cook, the chairman of the Fire EMS Commission, that there will be efforts made to find out from the Fire Department what their thoughts are as far as any proposed changes to the intergovernmental agreement that the five municipalities have signed. Right along with that, I have contacted Margie Banker. Should there be a go-ahead, we feel like there's going to have to be an opportunity for all five municipalities to meet because they're part of this. And the only building around here that's large enough to be able to host that would be the high school. So, we would do that. Now, it gets kind of dicey because there's a lot of stuff that's scheduled in January. Tuesdays and Thursdays are out and I don't know when. So, I can't tell you. I just know that that is something that, I asked Margie if she would be willing to allow us to use the room, the gym. She said yes. But it can't conflict with a sporting event that's already previously scheduled. So, those are the two items that I have for you.
I think it's really important that if there's any change in the intergovernmental agreement, that the Fire Commission talk to all five municipalities in one sitting, like what you're talking about. Because I believe the message is not always the same when they talk to the municipalities individually. And so, I think it's important that all the municipalities hear it at the same time and hear the same thing from the same people.
Okay. I will pass that message on.
Do they have a theater there, just out of curiosity?
No.
They don't?
No, they just use the gym.
Just the gym? Okay.
You should just try to get their calendar.
The other thing, has the Fire Commission responded at all to the letter from the Village of Cambridge?
I had talked to Mr. Cook about that and I wanted him to do that when he came to see us. But he's not here.
But it's not just him. The whole Fire Commission needs to respond to our letter.
He wanted to do this with the attorney.
Okay.
So. All right. Okay. All right, that's my update on the Fire. Moving on. Update, Joint Oakland for any possible action on Blue Jay Way. We were supposed to have a meeting. Lisa, you know, Chris and I are on this, but you have been receiving it, so please share with us.
It was supposed to be last Friday with the weather coming on Thursday. The school asked if we could postpone it. It has been rescheduled for Monday, the nineteenth at ten a.m.
Of December.
So, the place we're having it at the school, at the high school, is that large enough to support additional people?
Yes, it is open to the public.
Okay. So, but again, I don't have children.
Yeah.
So, what door would I go into at this high school?
The district offices, if you're looking at the front.